It's time to start the August meeting with President City Council. We're going to open the floor for the Hurry, all of our constituents, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, Beverly Fox. We come today thanking you so much for the opportunity to see another day. We come asking your blessings upon our community, upon our children returning to school. We pray for their safety. We pray for the safety of staff. We pray for the safety of our parents. And we pray that our community continue to be a safe place to live. We ask your blessings upon all of us, all of us that work in leadership, that we can come up with good ideas to make the world we live in better. And we ask all these things that Jesus made, thank you, Father, amen.
Amen. I pray that the religions to the glory of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with, need approval for the minutes of the July 24th meeting?
So, I have to...
Satara second by Carla.
I have something that I want to say about that. In the minutes where we have the dollar bills, you know, that are out, if you didn't have any of those, they would have first warning in the minutes, you didn't have that in the minutes. Okay, I can't hear you. She had the minutes for the dollar bills, but you don't have any of the first warning or the warning or the first, if the police see someone with the dollars, then have the police, don't have that. You didn't have that in the minutes, maybe you get the first warning, maybe you don't have that.
All right, John, go correct that, and we'll get it set up, all the council members for the next motion. Go ahead, Sean.
Motion second. Curry?
Yes.
Roberts? Motion here. Mitch? Austin?
Yes.
Williams? Uh? Amy? Dick?
Yes.
All right, the next on the floor is financial for the month of July. Any questions, discussion?
Will we accept the motion for financial?
Mr. Austin with the second.
Curry?
Yes.
Roberts? Mitch?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Uh?
Amy?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
All right, reports, Mary, you got the fourth.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've got several things here in front of you. The first thing is just an information piece. It's on the county fair, their theme, their dates. It's got, there's always a lot of questions on the carnival and our man nine, we can enter different things, so there's that, just to have this information. Then also, the second thing I have in front of you is the sales tax report that I give you each, each time. Something new, we'll also see a flyer that talks about a job fair. I got this today, you know, with Escavarna, they're in Nashville, they're going to be doing several layoffs and closing their plant. They're getting ready to have their first layoff, and they're having this job fair this Thursday from 10 to 2 in Nashville. And these are the jobs that they're, that they're phasing out on this first round. So, these are the skill sets that these people that are leaving will have, if you know of someone that's looking for employees. The first round of people will be assemblers, groundkeeper, machine operators, one and two, material handler, one and two, motor tester, performance auditor, planer buyer, quality auditor, receiving inspector, senior team lead, setup technician, silk screen operator, team lead, and warehouse associate. So, please, if you know someone in the area looking for a job, please encourage them to go to this job fair. Like I say, this is phase one of their layoffs, so there will be another job fairs that will come about, but please help spread the word there. The next one, if you'll find, there's three pages colored together that looks like this right here. It was Satara and Patricia that had asked me to come up with potential designs for door hangers to go on the doors of people in town. You know, we seem to do a lot of fussing and sending out letters to people that are not keeping their yard mowed, that's doing bad things, but by far, there's more people doing the right things. And they wanted us to come up with something so that we can hang that on the doors and thank those people. So, my daughter Tessie designed these, so we've got three choices. So, when you've had time to look at them, just text me this week and let me know which one you prefer, and then I'll get those printed out, and I'll probably just bring some home to the next council meeting, and that way, each of you can have some that in your district or your ward, that things that you're noticing that people are going above and beyond, you can just go name one on their door. So, just text me your, your choice there. Then the rest of the items have to do with houses and yards. The ones that have all the photographs, those are the before and after of the houses that have been torn down this month that Jason and I have gotten done. They got Joyce Pritz, the Ford Harris, John Miller, and I see Lee Walker. Those are the board that were done this month, and they will, actually, they have one that they'll start on tomorrow, they're going to start on it today until it rains. So, that's where we are on the teardown list. On the handout, you'll see the other names that we're waiting on, still a few pieces of documentation, and waiting on the city to get it on their list to do. So, it looks like we've got two, four. It looks like we've got eight left to do. So, if you have questions on that, I'm sure that you go on that. And then look at your list that says potential condemnation list. I had given you a list a couple of council meetings ago, and I've made some notes out to the side. Like number one, she's been moved to the teardown list. Number two, they cleaned up their property, and once they got it cleaned up, the house was not as bad as we had first thought. The Willie Morland estate... The Willie Morland estate is one we've been working on for two years that had so many heirs that had to be signed off on. The attorney from Hope called me this week, and she assured me that she would try to get before the circuit judge, you get approval for her sign the, the releases. So, if not, then I would say next month, we need to keep her on the condemnation list. Number four has been moved down, has been moved to the teardown list. And number six has been moved to the teardown list and already torn down. So, Willie, the only one that we have been able to work something out with is number five, and that's at 930 Ralston Road, that needs to have the condemnation process started. So, if that's something that you're wanting us to do, I think Eric, the attorney, will need to bring, I guess, a resolution next month through all authorizing us to start that, to start that process. Bruce has helped us, we've tried to get ahold of these people, we can't get any, anything out of them, so it's kind of where we, where we stand with that. And then the last thing, it's a two-page, you can see that 27 certified letters have been sent out, and you can see I've made notes out beside the ones that have responded to those and have taken care of their property. And the rest of them have still not responded at this time, so we're still in that two-week wait period before the city will go in and mow the property, and then Eric and John Miller will take it from there as far as lanes and putting out some notices. So, made a lot of progress this month, and I'm hoping for any questions if you have anything on that.
How, how far into the 14-day round before we start actually pulling the legal up?
Well, the first round was 15, if you look at that list of certified letters, the first 15 was the first mail out that I did. That two weeks has already passed, and you can see, one, two, three, four, five of those have been mowed. And then I sent out, and we've got four different people that sent in bid requests to mow the other ones. So, I know one of them got mowed, number three got mowed on Saturday, I believe, number four got mowed this weekend. So, tomorrow, I'll go out and look and see which one of these have been done, and then I've emailed and talked to Eric, he's going to give me, I guess, a form on how we've got to do the lanes to the property from there. The second, I did, did three different rounds of mailouts. So, the second round is actually, there are 14 days, it's up tomorrow. The third round is up on Wednesday, and then we'll start getting some bid prices on people mowing those. So, like you can see, we've got a total of 27, and that's not all of them. It just got to the point, that's all I can manage right now, until we get some of these mowed. So, once we get these 10 to 2, then we'll do, we'll do some more, but I was kind of getting overwhelmed, trying to keep up with those.
All right, thanks. Okay, next on tonight's business, amendment to ordinance, ordinance number two of 2002 to increase the amount of the fines associated with the violation of the city ordinance. Y'all instructed Mr. Hughes to write that amendment last month's meeting, and we're ready to start. John?
City of Preston ordinance number two, I'm going to go forward to amend ordinance number two of 2022 concerning fine three assets. Whereas the city president and citizens have experienced, experiencing problems with the dog and cash front and large hands, whereas the city president recognizes that the allowance of such activity to continue poses a hazard to the health, safety, and welfare of citizens of Preston, Arkansas. Now, therefore, being ordained by the city council for the city of Preston, Arkansas, and regular section that, section one, noted, section two, three, and four, ordinance number two of 2022 are hereby amended to make the fine for violation fifty dollars for the first offense and one hundred dollars for subsequent, subsequent offense plus court call. Section two repealer. All ordinances for parts of ordinance that is not with here with are repealed. Section three, ordinance, is hereby determined this ammendatory ordinance being necessary for the effect of operation and enforcement of ordinance number two of 2022, as further amended by this ordinance, being necessary for health, welfare, and general safety of the public. An emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be put forth in effect proper after its passage and approval. This is an ordinance adopted by the city council of Preston. The city of Preston, Arkansas, and regular section is eighteen, May of August of 2024.
Question. I don't have a copy of that.
I know, I just got it. While we're waiting, does everybody have a copy of the amendment and links to the one property?
One, one.
What's that?
One.
That, that should translate to reading. Okay. You want me to have to read it?
Yeah. I was going to give you, it's giving you time to look over and read it.
And, and looking over there, according to what we changed on the minutes, shouldn't that be in here? You know, what we said on the first time, sites, they get a warning, shouldn't that be in there too?
Uh, we don't have to, we have to see the attorney for that.
Shouldn't that be in there too? They were mentioning that the first time, when we cite somebody, they get a warning, and after that, then you start the process.
I just followed the minutes, and the minutes don't say anything about the warning.
But we just, we just, she mentioned that earlier, but then what we made, what you made a change for?
Yes.
That was a verbal conversation, I don't remember.
And he said that this was already made with the minutes. So, when I say we're in the hour of minutes, gotta be in this.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, whatever you have, like, like he said, whatever you have, it needs to be in here. If it's not in here, then the first time, when, when they cite somebody, it's fifty dollars according to this, right? Am I right?
That's correct.
So, I'm saying, do they not, I'm asking this before we, do they not get a warning for the first time? That's, that's the thing I'm saying. Do they not get a warning for the first time? Do we find them the first time to appeal? That, that's the thing I'm saying.
They never agreed on it.
I know the officer needs to know too.
We never agreed on it, that's why it's not... Yeah, we never agreed on that.
But, but...
We're just discussing, everybody was just talking.
Yeah. All, all of us have always that discretion to give a, okay, officer speaking, to give you a warning, but discretion.
Well, I, well, I'm probably, but I just wanted to make sure, because they can come back and say, what, didn't say, you didn't say you get a warning, you see what I'm saying? You got, I want to bag them up too.
Right here.
That's the only thing I'm saying. Am I, you could understand what I'm saying. Whatever we say, if, if they don't do that, that's fine, but I don't want nobody to say I didn't get a warning, you see what I'm saying? Conversation, the minutes was written, uh, this read, question was asked to the officers, do you give a warning? They said yes. It, I don't think that has to be in the minutes, I mean, I don't think that has to be in the ordinance.
I think it should be in writing, that they get a first time warning, and then if they, if it happens again, then they can charge fifty dollars, then a second, a third time, then it will be one hundred dollars for tele-creation, although we agree on that.
The, the only thing I'm saying, I'm not trying to be difficult, but reading this, it says this, hereby to make the fine violation fifty dollars for the first offense.
Well, that's what it means, same as... Typically, both statute or ordinance or whatever it is imposing criminal penalties, they always say a fine for the first offense, who, you know, fines can increase. The speeding ordinance don't say you give a warning first, but officer always have the discretion to give a warning. Statute for burglary, don't say you get a, oh, the warning for the first offense, but you don't have to have a warning in there.
Okay.
I'm not saying you shouldn't put it in there, I'm just saying you don't have to. Officer always have that discretion to give a warning.
No, according to my minutes from, uh, last month, that warning wrote until after the vote on the fines, and no word was anything mentioned about putting more in the... Well, they asked them, do they give, give a warning, like the citizen, they answered yes, we never said anything. Yeah, I know what you're saying. But I did. I know, I did. I said that, should they have a warning before being charged a fine, and I would say that. I've got no decision to make about it. Excuse me? Would the council make no decision about it, they just kind of tied that one up?
All right. Let's stay. Any more discussion?
Well, if for good, if we could, could we get the, in writing, that they have a first time warning in the, in this, in this amendment? Could it be put in, in writing, please?
It could be, but that's not, it could be, that's not what was voted on by the council last month, you'd have to have a new vote to put this off.
Well, it was left out of the minutes, because I made the right decision.
We got to give a resolve.
We all should have to agree.
This was, this was not a part of the ordinance last month, so it sounded like if we want to bring it back up, then, let's do it and move on.
Got to bring it back up and get it re-vote, like Mr. Hughes said, yeah. You got to bring it back up and discuss it, get a re-vote, like Mr. Hughes said, to, to put it in writing into a...
It might have should have been in there last month, we wanted it to have a give, so if we're going to do it, we got to...
If that's so, we just need to resolve it one way or the other, and then just keep on going.
If you cancel the warning in there, I don't want to inject myself into deliberation, but I would caution you against doing that for law enforcement purposes. I mean, you just generally have a violation, and you have a penalty for that violation. You don't say the first offense, you get a warning, and that's just not how criminal violations work. Officer can do that, they have the discretion to do it, but I'm not aware of any statute or regulation that imposes a criminal fine for a violation that says the first offense is a warning. But, I'm not saying you can't do it, I'm just saying it's probably not a good idea.
I don't understand why it's not a good idea. I have it in writing. I just, I don't get it. It's, if it's not a big thing, you can or you cannot, why is it such a problem to have it written, written in there?
I mean, I, you can do that, I'm just saying, I'm not aware of any criminal statute or violation that says the first offense is a warning. I'm not saying you can't do that. If the board wants to do that, that certainly can.
Any more discussion on where we're at on this right now?
Well, so I guess we to the point where we're going to ask the board, are we going to revise it and put more in there and not?
No, I thought, I thought, I thought we need to decide, or that, or we need to approve the ordinance as it's rolling.
Well, I'm not, I mean, how many of these people are repeated offenders from this issue? How many orders would we have to give? I mean... Have to give a lot, I think.
I'm pretty dependent on what's said. My, my, my thing, which, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that from what I heard from the officer, as long as they say the first time they, they mention it, they say that they will give a warning. I, I'm, I'm pleased with that, if that's what they do, you see what I'm saying? But I just wanted to make sure, you see, do you understand what I'm saying? I, I don't have a problem with, if they saying the first time they talk to a person, they have the discretion, they're going to give a warning, then next... Without being ordered to say this, without, without being ordered to say that we, we leave the resolution at least, I mean, that's just me. If we leave the board, then that's me, so. I've got a speeding ticket warning before, because I've got a speeding ticket without a warning. I'll go a little faster this afternoon.
Well, that's the deal, it depends on probably how severe the, the violation is. Probably depends on how severe the violation is, you know, if people wants to give them a warning or not. I mean, if it's really severe, you might want to go ahead and just give them the, the fine right there, bam. That's something for y'all to decide, the ordinance has been read.
The other comment I would make is that creates a paperwork burden for law enforcement officers, if they do ultimately give a ticket and it's in the Preston Municipal Court. The law enforcement at the end would have, as an element of proof, would have to show that they gave a warning last year, you know, they're going to have to keep records of warnings and keep those on file for a long period of time. How long do the warning last? Did they give a warning last year, does that warning still apply 12 months later, or is it just a totally new type of offense? I just think that opens up lots of problems if you memorialize in there that the first offense they give a warning. Not only would that prove the offense, if they gave a ticket and it was contested, but not only have to prove the elements of that offense, they would have to prove... Not only have to prove the elements of that offense, they would have to prove that at some time in the past, they gave a warning. Was it the same animal, was it the, was it a different animal? Or what were the circumstances of the warning before you could ever get to that first offense where they get fined? It just opens all kinds of problems. It might be.
So, Brother Bruce, I move, we move forward with it like it is, and it doesn't have to be that, you know? If we need to take a vote with it.
So you're ma, you're making a, a motion to approve the or, the first, with the first reading?
The resolution.
No, thank you.
Like it is.
Okay, ca, uh, Carol, second.
Okay. You have a motion in the second. Curry.
Yes.
Meeks.
No.
Austin.
The nine understand it is.
Williams.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Ditch.
No.
Okay. A motion to review by. Todd Lonely?
Who with?
I need a review, a motion to review the ordinance by Todd Lonely?
So.
Need a second? Mr. Austin, Austin is the second, okay. Read by Todd Lonely?
City of Prescott ordinance two, uh, twenty twenty four to amendment number two, uh, twenty twenty two, no certain fines to be assessed. Curry?
Yes.
Meeks?
No.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Ditch?
No.
Okay, we only need a motion for the third and final review by Todd Lonely?
Carolyn, all right. You have a second? Sitar is second, okay.
And Curry?
Yes.
Meeks?
No.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Ditch?
No.
Okay.
So now we have seen a motion to approve.
Second? Is somebody in second?
Oh. I, I got Carla with second, right? Yeah.
Curry?
Yes.
Meeks?
No.
Austin? Williams, yes. Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Ditch?
No.
That's just five two.
Okay, uh, the next, uh, item is the Warner Trucking contract.
Are we doing that one tonight?
This is, uh, on what used to be the pajama factory or the hatchery up here. Three years ago, we leased it to, or we leased it to Warner Trucking for a drop station for their east and west coast trucks. They paid City of Prescott three thousand a month. And, uh, the contract is basically, which three years was up, so this is just another renewal for three years, beginning August the first. And, uh, going through July the thirty first of twenty twenty seven, they would still be paying the three thousand dollars. And we have to provide a Ford body out there for the truckers to use. That's the only, the only challenge.
Brother Bruce, I move to retain the review.
Okay.
Second.
I add a.
Sitar is second.
Yes.
Okay, we have a one in the second. Curry?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Ditch?
Yes.
What did you say there?
What was the, what was the, uh?
Kind of?
The resolution?
On the resolution or the type of?
Oh.
He was, he was handwriting there. The date, August first, twenty twenty four, not twenty, twenty twelve.
Yeah, okay. Okay. We have a resolution warning. I think we're going to sit.
Okay, uh, we don't have any yellow cards tonight. Uh, did any council, any matters to discuss? Want to bring anything else up tonight?
I'm going to, I'm going to ask questions about the other law.
We're fleshing the system. We about to, we got a little bit going down.
Man, I've been like that since June. When I came back on my vacation. I wanted to, I didn't picture everything.
Brother Perry?
Yes, sir.
If you were still out there on that, my, my phone ringing off the hook.
Mine is too.
I'm just, I don't understand if probably when I came over here, you told me, would you just tell the public what we got going on there?
Well, we, I mean, we're fleshing the, we're fleshing the system, this is, this. A system needs to be flushed every so many years, uh, to get the, what settles out any pipes and collects and all. And we haven't been able to do that since we've been working at the river so much on the problem down there. So, we did an aggressive flushing, we, uh, last week for Stewards Farm. And trying to get it flushed out good, and now we're, we're trying to get it settled back down and, and clear it up everywhere. The rule of system kind of spreads it out a little bit where it makes it a little more difficult for us to achieve that. But we're, we're working every day to get, get it and work clear we can, until we get it all over. But it's, it's, uh, it's something that you do in a, in a water system every so often, you have to flush it out.
Is this something, we couldn't have got out to the citizens also, they would be aware of this?
Uh, Bruce put a video on Facebook or whatever.
Swar, just put it on Swar and Hope Prescott. Yeah, oh, yeah.
After the, they are, I'm talking about Swar, that article, we should have been something out way before that.
We had a fire that stirred up the system really bad. We really didn't have any time to make plans, it had to be done quickly because it was already stirred up. There was a fire that they fought for three or four hours during the night. And it had everything already stirred up really bad. And we just flushed, started them to get it cleared up. So there wasn't any time to put out notice that we're going to do this in a certain time and all that. We get big action.
You're still, you're, you're, you're still.
He's still messing up my clothes. People need some help because we are messing up clothes. Missed them, my. I mean, you get ice tray, they, they dirty, I mean, it's full, full of that.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
So I don't know what, what could have took so much time to type up one page and then had to run it and stuff in the light. Because I don't understand how that took, took a lot of time.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Bruce, was that Friday that I called up here and, uh?
Yes, mhm.
Okay, Bubba and him came out, they questioned, uh, how it was. And, uh, it finally had a little better. It wasn't a muddy cannon that I told you.
Right.
And so, this day, the building, uh, when I was taking a shower, it's brown. It was worked today.
Really?
And the question that I wanted to ask here, uh, there's a lady on, um, opposite street, well, she's on side street. From where I live, on, on Warren, on Warren. I live on Warren, but I don't know that little alley street that she lives on. What's her name, Bruce?
It's A or B Street, isn't it?
Well, it's.
Yeah, Ms. Ruby?
The, the, the pipes are joined. And, uh, hers was cleared out, they told me, and then mine was still brown. So how could that be? We're on the same, um, we're on the same water pipe that, uh, we're joined together. Hers clear and mine's. Mine's muddy. And then my in-laws are next to me and theirs is clear. Now, I, I get it, and, and Bubba couldn't answer it.
This is, this is the one that, that, that they'd been out of town during the main flush, right?
We responded to the call we had and we tried to clear it up the best we could.
Well, he can't, Bubba can't.
Bubba opened up, it's a dead end line that doesn't have any, it's a small line, two inch line, it doesn't have any way to flush it except through meters. We pulled two meters, flushed it and ran it, and when they left, everything was clear. But now it's changed, then we need to go back.
Well, they were going to reference that, you know?
Yeah, the, that last thing that I posted on Swar at Hope Prescott was, uh, you know, if you're still experiencing that tinted water, to call up here, we'd send that water department personnel to inspect it. So, yeah, so that's, and I know it's, it's, it's sad, but, yeah, y'all need to. If, if you get your phone ringing, just tell them to call up here. Holly and Shoshaw will take their names and addresses down and we'll get up to Bubba and Perry and Jono and them, and they'll go out and get their inspections. Because that's, that's the only way that we can tell. It's like Ms. Ruby's, hers is clear, but yours was tinted. See, uh, we would, otherwise we would think that the whole line was clear because she had reported to us and, yeah, and she brought some samples up here. And she, every day I would ask her, when she came in for the, to socialize, how was your water day? She said it's getting clear, get through, and then the other day she said it's totally clear. I said, that's great. I was thinking that whole side was taken care of, till you called me Friday and said, hey, mine's brown, brown.
Yeah, it was purple, my.
Yeah.
I think eventually got a little clearer.
Yeah, that's what we need to do, we just need to have the citizens, uh, I guess, that's part of our jobs, is for them to take phone calls and relate to the.
Yeah, but if you're in the middle of the shower, I mean, you know, you know, one of it.
Yeah.
Caller got the data on West Side. And they said they cleared up for three or four days.
Yeah.
And then.
That is totally.
They got more.
See, now, I didn't see Ms. Ruby, she wasn't here today, so. If it was, she would have told me, yeah, Ms. Ruby didn't come to the center today, so. On the west side, on that same line as Ms. Susan's. Yeah, just, we'll just relate it, just have them call in and, and we'll get them checked.
I think you, you communicated through media.
Right.
With updates coming out, there were some chicken form.
You came up here and told me something about it, I said, well, I already put something out for.
Caught in there.
And then we updated. Right.
And both of us would help them understand what we say, check the filter again. You know, as much as possible.
We could put a, we could put another update on the, on the, on them tomorrow and say, you know.
Here, could it possibly be old pipes, rusty pipes or something to that shake, reasonable?
Water supply for the City of Prescott can be supplied through a six inch pipe. It supply everything that we do. But we don't use a six inch pipe. If we use a six inch pipe, the flow through that pipe would be a fast flow, it would keep everything stirred up, everything would stay nice and clear. But regulations require that we have a certain amount of storage in our system to provide water in case there's a failure in mechanical equipment. So they have to make the pipe bigger. So then the water slows down a little bit. There's also regulations that require fire protection in the city that makes the pipe bigger, but it also slows down the water flow. And then your engineers want to plan for the future so that you have enough size in your system to grow that makes the pipe bigger. So that slows down the water flow. So things settle out over time in that water line. And when you flush it, it spurs it up and spreads it out through the whole system. We're working to take care of that problem and we're just having to have the whole system flushed out yet. We've got over two hundred miles of pipe that we're having to flush out and try to clear up. And we're working on it, we're trying, there's just a few of us. We have to be careful how we do it because the system is over a hundred and thirty years old. So we have to be careful where we do it and how we do it, or we'll blow out lines that's serving water. We're trying our best to get this cleared up as quickly as possible with the least amount of problems for everybody. But it is going to cause a problem for a little while until we get it settled back down. But it is something that has to be done in the water system every so often.
Okay, now I have a one on the scores.
Yes, ma'am.
What kind of pipe do we use?
We use. Plastic pipe, the newest pipe we use is PVC. We also use some polyethylene, which is a flexible pipe. The next pipe is ductile iron, which is a metal pipe. The next pipe is cast iron. Cast iron is the oldest pipe we have. That's the hundred year old stuff. And then we have ductile iron, and then we have plastic, and we have polyethylene, that's the new stuff. We have always, the old stuff started in eighteen ninety, and the last new stuff was put in, uh, just a year or two ago. When we did highway projects and the line to the river and the line into town in eighty five from, uh, the new water plant was ductile iron. We, we use the new materials on the new installations, but we still got the old stuff. And even the small pipes, some of it's still galvanized, metal iron pipe.
It's painted over.
Yes, ma'am. The galvanized. And we add chemicals to try to sequester the iron, keep it in suspension and, and coat the pipes. But at overtime, you have to flush it out. And the temperature of the summertime makes it worse because the warm water reacts different than cold water. And then the lake near us is dumping their water off the bottom of the lake instead of, what they normally do is change the quality of the water they're treating. So we've had to change our treatment. There's just a lot of things happening this year, we're really trying to keep, get a handle on.
Years ago, they used to flush it out every period.
Yes, ma'am. That was when we had wells.
Laundry man and, uh, people that washed their clothes up there would, would turn like that and mess their clothes up, so.
And we, we, we've had a good run and avoided that for a long time, but it's built up on us, we had to, we had to, we had to flush.
Thank you for that class. The public need you.
If so.
Yes, a discussion or announcement from the council? I, I see something going on in town, I spoke to a few people about it. Excuse my voice, I'm about to do it. But, uh, people moving the yards. I don't know, some people think that the city is supposed to sweep the grass up in the street. But they throwing the grass out in the street, I went by one place, grass moved on this side and this side of the street almost covered with grass. I mean, is that, is that, I tried to tell people, I said, you, you not throwing the grass back over that, not in the street.
It's real dangerous for motorcycle riders on the, on the racks.
I noticed that people moving, throwing the grass out in the street, it's getting to be work. I don't know, should we say something about that from the city? But I, I spoke to people.
We're moving the yard.
Do y'all see anything about that?
Y'all see, I'm scared to say something.
All right.
I'm going to join.
Okay, we got a motion to get out of here.
We need to report here about the, uh, system on that.
Carolyn and Carla second.
We need to adjourn.
Okay.